Sorry. Give me a signal. Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call the meeting to order at 7:00 P. M. Welcome, everybody. Um, the agenda, is there any additions?
Madam Mayor, Administration would like to move right into thirteen point three. The church will be shut down up to administrative reports.
Any others? Move by council for us. All in favor? Carry. So I'm going to call the hearing to order at seven oh one. My name is Crystal Mackenzie and I will chair the meeting. All questions and comments, please direct them through me. This is a formal hearing and there will not be any debate. It's to hear everybody that wishes to speak. Everybody who has pre-registered. You will all be given an opportunity to come to the podium and speak once to the matter. Each presenter must state his or her name. Full name, that is, your address and your interest in the matter, including whether you support or do not support. Presenters are to stay within the five-minute time limit and are encouraged when speaking to keep to the point. So I'm going to call upon staff right now. C. A. O. McCaskill to introduce the subject of the hearing.
Madam Mayor, I'll refer that to Ms. Gav.
Good evening, Madam Counsel.
Good evening.
So this public hearing, it's for bylaw ten seventeen dash twenty. And it involves the rezoning of Plan four five zero seven N. Y. Block twenty-two, blocks three, four, five, six, and seven, also known as one oh one oh seven to one oh one fifteen hundred and third Street, high level. Rezoning from low-density residential, which is R. One, to medium-density residential, R. Two. In the public hearing package that you have in front of you, I've just provided a brief table of the differences between the R. One and the R. Two land use districts under each land use bylaw. So the current land use bylaw is nine four four dash thirteen. And ten eighteen dash twenty-one received first reading last month. So for the R. One land use district, the permitted discretionary changes do not change between bylaws, they're the same. For the R. Two land use districts, there are minor changes um, in that the townhouses would be up to six units permitted. And under the current land use bylaw, it's up to six discretionary. So it's just minor changes. And then just a note there that mobile homes being introduced as a discretionary use in the R. Two would not be applicable for this site if it were rezoned. They are for other urban legal addresses that have been identified in that land use bylaw. So the registered landowner for the urban legal address is Alberta Social Housing and Greenspace Alliance. Been hired by Alberta Social Housing as the applicant to work on this rezoning application. Um, we got first reading on December seventh and the public hearing date was scheduled for January twenty-fifth. That was changed on December fourteenth to today's date to allow for more public consultation through G. S. A. Administration recommended that council provide first reading to bylaw ten seventeen dash twenty to allow meaningful public engagement to occur. And um, since then, we've reviewed and reevaluated uh, the merits and the intent of this rezoning application. And we've gone over um, planning-related concerns that we have as administration. Uh, concerns that we've received from stakeholders and the public. And have provided a recommendation for business later. Um, which would be to look at doing an agreement if the rezoning went ahead through a restricted covenant or development agreement. And that is the subject of today's hearing.
Thank you, Ms. Gav. Is there any questions of counsel to Ms. Gav? Seeing none, thank you. So I'm going to first call out for those applicants, or sorry, for those um, here that are speaking in favor of the bylaw.
Madam Mayor, we have two representatives from Greenspace Alliance who will be joining us by the side.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and counsel in administration and public. My name is Marcelo Figuera. I'm a senior planner and associate with the Greenspace Alliance. Uh, we are from Edmonton and um, we're here tonight to speak in favor of the rezoning bylaw. I'm just going to share my screen because we have a short presentation, if you just take a second. Can, could administration give me permission to share the screen, please?
Marcelo, can you please request the screen again?
Yeah, I'm trying and it says it's disabled. There we go, yeah, now, yeah, it's working. Thank you. Can everybody see the screen now?
Yes, we can, myself.
Okay, thank you for your patience. So um, this first slide is really to show a little bit of the outline of the presentation tonight. So uh, I'm going to be splitting this presentation with uh, the principal of Greenspace Alliance, Jonas Sheespen, who will talk about um, very in deep detail, the concept options and the administration suggests this concept. But I, I just want to start by doing a little bit of a recap of how we got here today. So um, there's several reasons why this chat, this site was chosen for the rezoning. Um, it is a perfect location for people that pretty much depend on services and, and amenities such as parks, schools, and, and other community services. It does uh, help the, your main street to give the, the competition that those businesses have with the big box developments along the highway. Uh, it really, it's a little bit of increase of density based on from the R. One to R. Two district. Um, we, we start this, in this process, in July with the R. Three, but during the, the previous consultations and conversation, the administration, we scaled back this to R. Two. Um, and also, least but not last, there is a shortage of, of housing, of this type of housing in high level, which we, representing Alberta Social Housing Corporation. The intent is to increase that, at least to close the gap a little bit more between the demand and the supply. In terms of this housing shortage, um, we will provide this diagram on the screen from Social Housing Corporation. Um, in, in their view, there are twenty-six families of various sizes and composition that are on a queue for, and eager to get some kind of a housing in, in the high level, in the high level area. Uh, this number, it's, it's a snapshot in time, was taken from what they were right after the pandemic started in, in the spring. It fluctuates, but in, in the long term, the, the goal for them is to have like a, a supply that, uh, over time, uh, will meet the demand for housing.
Marcelo, we're not able to see that slide. Uh, we are still on slide number one.
Oh, that's. Is it moving now? Because there might be a lag on the.
It's moving now.
It's moving now?
Yeah, so that was the slide you were talking about, yeah.
Right, thank you. Yeah, so it just goes slower, so sometimes there's a lag on change of the slide, we'll just see. Okay, so um, as administration outlined to council on December seventh, this bylaw received first reading. Um, we further discussed, because of the pandemic, we really wanted to have um, a lot of meaningful engagement with administration, with the, with the public. So talking to administration, we request that the public reading date was, was changed from end of January to beginning of February, which is today's date. Um, and right before Christmas, we started discussing administration, how we could do a very meaningful online engag- engagement that would take several days with different opportunities for people to talk to us, to them, or go on the Facebook page or Twitter. So that took um, pretty much two weeks in December to organize and then at the, between Christmas and New Year, administrations send letters to all the neighbors within a hundred meters of the site. And we start this engagement process online, which pretty much without the, the administration support would, would not be able to do it. Because the, the Facebook and Twitter were critical to um, spread the word that this process, this process was ongoing and that we would have this um, public hearing coming up pretty soon. Um, so every day, um, we were between, uh, two weeks in January, we were available for anybody that could or wanted to talk to us online at the same time in the evening. Um, we also sent the printouts of our display boards with options for administration, so whoever didn't have access to the internet or preferred to come to the town hall and talk to somebody, they could call the, the, the planning department and schedule a time and, and come and discuss their concerns and see the, the boards closely. Um, there, there was advertising in the newspaper twice during that month. And um, there were surveys that we posted online and we also gave um, paper copies of the survey to administration, so anybody that would like to take it home and, and, and think about it, what they, they wanted to say, they had that, that opportunity. So it was a long process, two months, two, two weeks organizing and three weeks pretty much having this online opportunities to everyone. Um, my understanding is that administration received several letters of people that had concerns. Um, we did talk on the phone or sometimes on uh, via email as well with people that sent questions to Greenspace Alliance, so we responded to those questions. And ultimately, we received twelve surveys online, which is the thing that I would kind of explain later in the, in the presentation. So here's, here's what we heard, so just to recap, um, in, in the first reading meeting in December, there were four options presented to council. One option showed four plexes, two options had the different numbers of townhouses, and one last option had ten units duplex. So in our survey, we also asked people to indicate what would, would be their preferred option. So based on the twelve surveys that we reserved, there were a preference for duplexes, but surprisingly, townhouses were, combined, were not too far behind the preferred option. So taking this into consideration, those, that, those results, we talked to administration after the, the open house period was closed and we developed a hybrid uh, concept that Jonas Sheespen is going to talk at, in the second part of this presentation. Uh, but we also heard several concerns, which I'm kind of calling them in this first column as issues, so uh, they were very consistent comments about density, parking, traffic, safety issues, and the, the location, not P. I. T. O. for this type of development. But there were also people that outlined a lot of opportunities. Um, they, they indicated that should this process and the project go ahead, um, there should be a mix of affordable housing for single families, single individuals, small families. Um, there would be, they would like to see athletic off-street parking and the garbage collection also to be planned properly. Um, the design should just look at any other houses in the neighborhood and there should be a lot of green space influencing. So there, there, there were, there were a lot of concerns, but also inputs in terms of how to make this process and ultimately their development a little bit better. Um, so based on this feedback that I received from the public, I, I want to quickly go over the R. Two district design regulations because um, we at G. S. A., we think the public concern is already addressed in several regulations in the D. C., in the R. Two district, especially because there is this one regulations that outline that some, some developments, they should also be designed in accordance with the, the town of high level design guidelines. So the design guidelines, they, they are advisory, but when they are embedded in this way in, in the, in the land use bylaw, then the, the development, they should be referred to those guidelines and follow. So I want to explain in detail each of the guidelines, but this is, I, I believe administration can explain them, or if council has any questions, we can go to the document and review it. But basically, there are design guidelines for semi-detached triplexes and fourplexes and townhouses. And they um, pretty much are consistent with the things that we receive from the public in terms of issues and opportunities. So how you, how you decide the garage, how you decide the building, things about landscaping, parking, so those, those topics are consistent with, with what we heard from the public. Um, here are some examples of those guidelines. Um, as you see, there is an expectation that the design would be of a high quality and, and pretty much fit within the character of the, the neighborhood. So now the examples in terms of how you treat your back alley, how you treat articulation colors of buildings. And one, one thing that we, I think we, we hear from the public and we a little bit more explore is scale, it's very important, and the form of those buildings. So now I will hand it over to our principal, Jonas Sheespen, and he will talk about in more detail about those options and the preferred options suggested by administration. If I had any questions, I can ask, respond to questions right now or at the end of the, the whole presentation. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and respected members of council. My name is Jyaneesh Chawande, with Greenspace Alliance. And I will be talking in favor of this resort application. Uh, next slide, please, Marcelo. Just going to take a few minutes to explain a high-level comparison between R. One and R. Two district. When we analyzed both these zones, we found a number of similarities when it comes to urban form allowed by these two zones. So uh, the maximum height in both the districts is ten meters, which is similar whether you go with R. One or R. Two. Uh, the maximum lot coverage is forty percent, so that controls the overall massing of buildings, that's also same. And the front setbacks and the rear setbacks are six and seven meters, which is predominantly same. So as Marcelo explained, the only difference between R. One and R. Two is the R. Two allows townhouses as a permitted use. Uh, and that allows slightly higher density to be accommodated on this site. And as one of the objectives of the Alberta Social Housing Corporation is to provide those additional units to address the housing needs in high level, we considered R. Two as an appropriate zone for this location. So next slide, please. I have like two, three slides that try to demonstrate if R. Two is implemented, what are the development possibilities on this particular site? So option number one, or one of the options is developing duplexes, which is a permitted use. Uh, are, these kind of like duplexes is also a discretionary use in R. One. Next slide, please. Uh, you can also do a combination of duplexes and townhomes on this site, which would get you slightly more units. Again, that's one of the objectives from Alberta Social Housing Corporation and it also fits appropriately with the surrounding context of a single-family neighborhood. Uh, and the last, or the next slide, please. Uh, when we uh, uh, completed our public engagement, we had, as Marcelo explained, number of meetings with administration. And uh, one of the ideas that was discussed was townhomes may be considered as an appropriate urban form at this location, uh, provided uh, the town housing units are actually fronting onto one oh third street so that it can address privacy concerns with the single-family housing, you know, like on the north and south side of this particular lot. So uh, this is a demonstration about how that concept can be implemented. And throughout this process, all the options we had created, this was actually one of the first options when we had shared them, these options with the community during the first open house. So uh, this option again provides approximately thirteen to sixteen units uh, at this location. Uh, one thing I would really like to stress is zoning is basically a tool to provide a framework, you know, like for the site, as long as we are able to address all the community concerns in terms of like height, density, uh, fit in the surrounding context and so forth. And we feel that this R. Two zoning on this site would provide that framework for the town to achieve appropriate built form at, at this location. As Marcelo explained, this site is at the periphery of the neighborhood, in close proximity to school and other amenities. So uh, it should provide enough assurance that the right project would, would be built at this location. But it will also give that flexibility for, for Alberta Social Housing Corporation to take this project forward at the right time. So last slide, please. At this point, we would really like to thank council, administration, and also all the citizens who participated in this process. Uh, because of their contribution, we were able to revise our application from R. Three to R. Two. And uh, we genuinely feel that R. Two is really a win-win situation for all parties involved and would really try to address the issue of housing in high level. And uh, at this point, we would like to request a decision from council to give a second and third reading to this rezoning bylaw. So thank you very much, that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Counsel, do you have any questions for Greenspace? No, seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we will now. We will now call upon those that were opposed to this bylaw change.
Madam Mayor, we have six individuals who registered to speak with council this evening. The first of whom is Mrs. Park.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just state your name to the municipal secretary with your address.
I am Barbara Miller and I'm at one oh one oh five, one hundred and third Street. Which is directly beside your building site. And I am just here to reiterate what I went around all the neighbors. And basically, we are saying no. We do not want this in our community and we feel as taxpayers and longtime residents of the community that we should have some say in what happens in the community. And we have submitted a letter. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, now, next registered speaker was Mr. Bashar. Mr. Bashar, sir. Mr. Kurt Vision.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening and welcome. Just state your name to the municipal secretary and your address, please.
My name is Kurt Vision. My address is one oh two oh seven, one hundred and third Street. I was also a previous owner of one oh one oh five, one hundred and third Street, which I sold to my mother-in-law, who was just here. Um, so I was at the R. Three meeting and came to the presentation. I have the same concerns that I had at that one. Um, safety, traffic, maintenance. And I think with the R. Two, those concerns are still there. There's a few less people, but we still have an issue with the, with the safety on that street. The, it's a high-use area for R. C. P., fire departments, and, and town vehicles, so I feel that there's better places for this, R. Two. Medium-density residential and I think it should stay R. One. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Curtis Davis.
Welcome. Thank you. Please give your name to the municipal secretary and your address.
Joyce Davis, one oh one two oh four, one oh fourth Street. I am actually blocked over, but the repercussions of the, one of these. I am actually blocked over, but the repercussions of one of these developments it will be felt in our area. Property value, of course, but more importantly, the safety, the vandalism that comes with that. We put a duplex in there, and yes, technically, we put four duplexes, technically it's a family, but I can guarantee you, history is such with some of the fire departments, you're going to end up with more families, which is going to cause vandalism. The noise is going to create all kinds of other issues. And again, the proximity to the first responders is not, not a good location for it. I can give you multiple reasons of having renters just down the street around one of them, in proximity, these as well where we had issues where people were not in low-income housing, but these were some, there were multiple issues, and I've addressed it in my letter, but I strongly think there are way better locations. Marcelo, I still don't agree with anything you've set forward. Anybody who lives in high level, which, you know, all of you do, everything in high level is walking distance. If school is such an issue, they can purchase the property across from the high school where the Catholic Church used to be. It's already got an apartment there, it's got, there's other areas in town that are already zoned for all two units. And this is not one of them. It's just, you're going to be pushing over a lot of green people, and I don't think it's better. First responders are more important than low-income housing. We're not saying we can't have a place to live. We're just saying find a more suitable location where it's not good for people, our first responders.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Good evening and welcome. Please give your name to the municipal secretary and your address.
Edith Smith. I live at 101 A6, 102th Street. Across the back lane from this proposed development. I'm pretty much in agreement with all these other people who are opposed. We've been there since 1996, and with the existing housing that's there now, often in the summer when everyone has their windows open, we get disturbed. It's like three or four in the morning lots of times, just with the people that are living there now. So if we add to that, it's just going to make it a lot worse. That's pretty much all I have to add.
Sure, thank you.
Madam Mayor, we have no other registered speakers.
What about written submissions?
Mr. Evans will summarize the written submissions.
Are these for or against?
Good evening again. We received approximately 20 letters in total, all in opposition to the proposed rezoning. The letters we received, most of the people already were here this evening, plus Connie Walker, Darren Christensen, Sergeant Dennis Deland at the RCMP detachment, Sue Leonard, Michael Watson, Deborah Warman and Donald Warman, Larry Warham and Josie Asils, Anna Rosa Rosalie Pesate, Monica and Yasmin Demesa, Janine George, Kendall Friesen, and Michelle Alfonso, Ray Smith Knox, Sherry Filio, and Stuart Watson, all opposed.
Thank you. Any final comments from administration?
Mr. Evans.
Okay, then I conclude this public hearing at 7:30. Thirty-six. Could I have a motion to close the public hearing, please? Counselor Morgan. Following the conclusion of the public hearing, council will discuss. Yep. All in favor? Carrie. So following this, council will render a decision. Thank you to everybody that made your presentations today. I'd like to call upon Corporal Danny Mills of the RCMP right now to give the RCMP Good evening.
There, counsel. I think everybody has a copy of our report. I'll go through everything here. It's very thick. There's a spreadsheet. Prisoner's account, it was last month. We had only 74 prisoners over last year, 117. As well, our calls for service, 164 over 232, which are down quite significantly. It's about a 30% decrease from last year for that timeframe. I think this could probably be attributed to a lot of the restrictions that COVID has put on to people's mobility and their options for where they can go, as well as the cold weather has had a significant hamper on activity in the town. Likely to see an increase in the calls for service once restrictions are lifted or eased, and weather starts to improve. Breakdown of the calls for service that we did have. There were seven assaults reported, two assaults on police officers, and there was one assault with a weapon. Charges have been laid on five of these matters. Two are still under investigation at this time, and the remaining few matters. Terms were not warranted, the complaint and victim wished no action to be taken. There are no reports of any break in order within the town this last month. Five reports of impaired driving, and community members making a strong use of the new provincial impaired driving sanctions. Six suspensions of various lengths were issued and on the dinner through the entire attachment area for which curbed in town. Fifteen liquor act incidences. Charges were related in one of those, and the other matters also saw the use of discretion where intoxicated individuals were lodged in cells until they were sober and able to carry themselves. There were thirty-seven calls of mischief to property or people having their obstruction of their property prevented. All of those matters were dealt with through officer discretion. As was noted last month, there's quite a number of mental health calls. We had eight this last month. Three of those were unfounded, and five of those were dealt with through the hospital. One person was reported missing. They have located it. There was one sexual assault reported, which is still under investigation. Four abandoned 911 calls, all of which were deemed to be unfounded. Two vehicles were reported as stolen. One of those was unfounded, and the other, the complaint requests no action to be taken. There were four reports of other injects. Charges were related in one, and the others were deemed unfounded. Four allegations of failure to comply with judicial orders. And other files include instances of assistance to other agencies, collisions, and general assistance for the public. Couple of highlights from the crime reduction unit over the past month. Crew arrested and charged two road traffickers that were transporting kids with $4,000 in cash through our area. Those funds were seized of the proceeds of crime. They executed multiple outstanding arrest warrants for individuals. Goes back to December, but they wanted me to also note that they were instrumental in the arrest of an individual who was listed on our RCMP most wanted list. They've been conducting regular checks on numerous individuals in terms of ensuring compliance with court-imposed curfews. They were significant assistance and still continue to be ongoing assistance in the ongoing misimprovement file that we still have in our office. And while they were just getting one female with outstanding warrants, she was charged with a number of provincial defenses, and then she was also subsequently charged criminally after multiple firemen found her possession inside of her vehicle. That is, and I have questions. Anything you want to add?
Any questions, council? No? Thank you very much for your report. Have a good evening. Yes. Through the minutes of the January 25th meeting. Deputy Mayor Leinford, all in favor? Carrie. I'm sorry, I forgot to hit send on my report. Sorry. Sorry, RCMP delegation moved by Counselor Morgan. All in favor? Carrie. So you have my report there. The highlights, I guess, from the ready report. We are having two community sessions with Chief Clarence Louis. And more details will be coming on how to get on those sessions. Boreal Housing, presentations from Alberta seniors and AHS on how to repatriate and homestead to LCMNA. And letters to Minister Shadr, Minister Pahn have been sent, saying we would like to repatriate it. We had a meeting with the MLA. Of course, most of you were there. Note, we requested a letter of support from our MLA for the joint multipurpose center. And MLA Williams agreed to support the facility at the government level. AUMA policing models, that was made basically on the proposed policing models, so we've all been through that. Highlight at the nail meeting was a presentation by Marcel of, I believe, Murder and Light about a flood mitigation trailer force for Northwest Alberta. Apparently, AUMA has stated that we don't have floods up here, so we really don't need a trailer, as there are three of them down south. Outfitting a trailer with tiger dams, pumps, et cetera, would be around $200,000. There's been concern raised by municipalities along the Peace River over Site C, and a letter will be coming to councils to support their concerns. And that's my report. Any questions? I would answer them. If there is none, could I please have someone move my report? Counselor Welkey, all in favor? Carrie. Deputy Mayor Leinford.
On January 27th, I attended the ready board meeting. February the 3rd, I attended the city working group meeting. Continuing to work on that. There should be requests for submissions going out right away for all these proposals for our provincial board. And then on February the 5th, I also attended the nail meeting.
I believe those requests for submissions have been on our workbench. Yes, and on the Guinea web. Counselor Anderson.
February 1st, I attended the meeting with the MLA.
Counselor Forrest.
Same thing, February 1st, Danny Williams.
Counselor Jessman.
February 3rd, meeting with the MLA.
Counselor Morgan.
So January 27th, Counselor Anderson and I both attended a library board meeting where we set up, did our organizational meeting for the chair, vice chair, secretary, et cetera. We are still operating at limited capacity with the restrictions, but people can still check books out and pick them up curbside, stuff like that. As the restrictions get lifted, we do have a plan in place to get the library reopened. February 2nd, with Counselor Forrest, I attended a waste commission meeting. Just going over day-to-day operations. Yeah, you're there. And February 4th, I attended a CCEC meeting where the discussion around Chief Louis came up, and how we wouldn't be advertising that. Currently, it is on the Northern Lakes College Facebook page that you can access that stuff. They're also planning to reach out to all the municipalities within our region to get in touch with them to help get the word out. Things of that matter. Very exciting.
So there is capacity for 300 people?
Something like that. It's going to be a virtual presentation, so you'll sign up. They will send you a login, and then you log in if you're as fast as I can.
Okay. Any other questions? Yes.
This is for Counselor Morgan. Just, any discussions in the past or lately regarding plastics? Well, I guess that wouldn't come from the landfill, but I mean, you take them in, but the plastics that are all over the ground, how do you contain those around the site? I hope that we're aware of that. We'll travel quite a distance tomorrow.
Right now, we just have staff go pick everything up and try to get it back to the keep it corralled within the site, yeah, at best again.
There's a guy somewhere in southern Alberta that's making fence posts of plastic. Let's thread both him, so maybe that's something you guys could look into.
Thank you. Okay.
Thank you, Counselor Morgan. Counselor Welkey.
On January 26th and 27th, 26th, I had an FASD board meeting. On the 27th, another FASD meeting. We're still working at hiring an executive director for the organization, which is a random position, so that's almost finalized. January 27th, I attended a city memorandum of understanding with Town High Level and the DNEA. That's been, I think we spoke of it here a little bit, it's been drafted, and moving into the final stages of the agreement, and the art submissions have gone out. So exciting work there. February 1st, I attended with Mayor and Council, a meeting with MLA Danny Williams. And on February 4th, we had Community Futures Board meeting via Zoom. Probably have known there is for future funding through Community Futures, especially for pandemic-related loans. We've added an attestation for the applicants to ensure they're complying with public health orders in order to get the money. There's nothing that can really be done for forcing, but we thought, pertinent as did the LED and the, you know, the higher-ups and Community Futures, to add an element of compliance with public health orders for receiving those types of loans. And also on February 4th, I attended but did not participate in a teleconference with Premier Kenny, Minister MacGyver, and Dr. Nishaw. Just some updates on the COVID pandemic situation in Alberta. Nothing really new to know besides what we see in the step-one changes that have happened today, I guess.
So question number one. Executive Director, what does that mean? Is one with all?
No, it's it, she's her role has involved more than she can handle, and the organization's requirements and what needs to get done is increasing. So it's actually more than what one would think with executive director. You know, a first thought might think that's a, like a secretary, so to speak, to the director, but it's more an individual with almost as high a level as responsibility to help carry out programming and manage the, you know, staff and activities of the FASD society. So almost like a joint leadership role.
Second, well, I'm glad she's not gone. Second question. What do you mean compliance with Alberta Health Services? So does that mean people that haven't
So
lost their employees or applying for loans of our employees, or what?
No, it just, no, no, it means that if you're going to apply for a loan under these No, it just, no, no, it means that if you're going to apply for a loan under these, um, programs, like put out by the government. Or, like pandemic-related hardships, that there's, that, that you attest to following the health orders. In place in your jurisdiction, or eventually, whatever it is. Um, there have been some, you know, businesses that have not been complying with the health order. Yet have received funds, you know, to get, to get through, so. It, it's, again, it wasn't designed to be, you know, an enforcement tactic, but just, uh, an extra. Just an extra level of, um, consideration by applicants to, you know, to follow the rules. Um, that we all have to and should, you know, to get through this.
Something like collecting serve and not being unemployed?
Kind of, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other questions? Seeing none, could I please have someone move council reports? Councillor Anderson, all in favor? Carry. So 10.1 is the council action list. Council, is there anything on the action list that you would like to speak to? Could I have?
I have a question.
Yes?
Um, the water service agreement was pending, so where is that at?
Um, Madam Mayor, servicing a big city in the areas within a town council and council territory. Uh, with recent changes and the potential to do a wastewater sharing agreement. Uh, we're looking at the completion of the potential design of that, I guess. And that probably had the same agreement, so currently, they're not connected to the water. And we may enhance the agreement to a little bit slightly.
So they're not connected even though the water's there?
You're right, Madam Mayor, you only have two connections, and that will be possible. So we will not connect until that agreement is in place. And it, it seems like could be a fair lot of it. We took an opportunity to step back and look at wastewater service in slide instead of having two separate agreements.
Okay, thank you. If there aren't any other questions, could I have a motion, please? Councillor Morgan, list for information, all in favor? Carry. The capital status report.
Madam Mayor, as you know, most of those are completed or carrying over until the next warm season. Administration will have that updated with the 2021, 2021 project.
I have a question on the sidewalks.
I'll give that to Director Strab again.
Thank you. So Director Strab, um, is there a plan for continuation of the sidewalk on the Service Street? Towards Wolverine Ford?
Madam Mayor, that plan was brought forward a couple of years ago, and I believe the value was around materials and materials to finish that whole street. We are working with the new future Dairy Queen site, that has potentially doing some sidewalk servicing with that as a partnership. Plan that we have forthright now for sidewalk is yet for rehabilitation. We haven't addressed this, the service road yet. If that's a wish of council for us to look at that again and break that forward, then we can do that as possible between 2021 and 2022.
So, you said you're working with, uh, the park development? So would that mean, uh, cost sharing or?
Yes, the park development has requested that we look at potentially sharing our project with them to complete the sidewalk along the service road. Again, that was a very high-level discussion from last call. And we will read that to them as part of our sidewalk program in the spring and see if they're willing to proceed.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions on capital projects? Could I have someone move? Councillor Forrest, all in favor? Carry. The financial report for December.
And Madam Mayor, your details will be reflected in the talk.
Good evening, Mayor Council. So I put together ju- December 2020, um, financial report for accounts receivable, taxation and utilities. Um, if there's any questions about those increases or decreases.
Questions from council?
Just to note that, um, the increase for accounts receivable was just our year-end invoicing, so it was quite high, but it included, um, two major invoices. One for our APCO franchise fee and then one for our reimbursement FCM for our city workshop.
No questions?
Okay, and then I've also included, um, our 2020 year-end variance report with our actuals versus our budget. So I did a summary of revenues and expenses on the first page. Um, and on the second and third page is us, um, summary by department. Um, and then any variances that were highlighted in red, I, I included the reasons below.
So on the actuals versus budget, on the, on the variance, uh, budgeted $386,667 from grants?
So that is our Louis grant, so we budgeted the full amount for that. Um, but right now, our year-end transfers aren't done and they're not posted for December 31st. So what we'll be doing is taking into consideration, uh, extension to March 31st. We'll, we'll do a year-end transfer for up to December 31st. And then take from January 1st to March 31st and do that Louis grant transfer as well.
Any other questions, council? Your explanations were great, thank you. Thank you. Could I have someone move the financial report? Councillor Welkey, all in favor? Carry. Town couns- or, sorry, monthly reports, council?
Madam Mayor, council. So this, uh, our reports this month will be for the month ending January. Um, for myself and general administration, uh, a lot of work went into the transfer to Heimsted Lodge and the work went into that. As the mayor mentioned, we've had meetings with seniors and with AHS, with Alberta Health. We've also had subsequent meetings with Alberta, uh, with Alberta Health Services. And this week, we're also meeting again with Alberta seniors, just to continue that process. It appears that it will take a minimum of six months and likely a year because of the AHS contract. Um, we finalized, thought we had finalized all the documentation for the cleanup of the stray properties in the industrial area. The bits and pieces that have accumulated over the years, consolidating that with the balance quarter section of stuff over purchases and sale. We had a couple of new things come in today to finalize that, find titles, what it appears all would be, just a few little things in that. All the consolidations and subdivisions will be finished in the industrial area. Um, we're, uh, worked with the senior administrative team on the asset management strategy. Uh, met a number of times with, uh, Green Space Alliance, the individuals performance for the social housing and the rezoning of 103rd Street. Um, we looked into a number of options on land exchange, important school vision for multipurpose facility. We have stuff coming to council here with the next one. Um, for city, we're sort of wrapping up that process and trying to keep those individual sub-communities going. And the balance of my month was essentially occupied by individual services, shared agreement negotiations with. So Madam Mayor, I'll call, uh, Dirk Phillips back.
Is there questions of CAO? Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening again, so just a quick report for finance. Um, participated in the city workshop by Zoom, um, working with the Denitah, Denitah. And we've also, um, filed our 2020 rent take reduction report, so that's finished. GST filing was completed and I just put a little noting here, we did receive our linear property assessment rule for the 2021 tax year. And we had a slight decrease of $166,000 and that was in, um, in APCO, APCO taxes. And it would be approximately about $1,900, give or take, with our current tax rates.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Owen.
Good evening, good evening. Hello. Um, just some of the highlights for last month. We got the first reading of the new land use bylaw. We got all the, uh, updated versions up on the website, and got the social media post going and in the newspaper as well. And I've sent it, uh, in the mail to all the known landowners that have existing residential uses within the industrial area. Um, the asset management strategy, so been facilitating that project ongoing and participated with all the staff that were interviewed by the consultant. Um, doing some surveys, gave state inventory and transfers to the consultants so they could do an assessment of where we're at. Um, with that, uh, subdivision applications are almost done, so finalizing those with the lands titles. And then we had our, uh, Land Use and Planning Assistant completing the safety code, so permit issuance for plumbing, gas and electric permits. So we're just building a bit of depth in the organization there. Uh, and then she's also started the reconciliation of town electronic devices as well. And then doing the monthly, uh, or sorry, quarterly inspection of the town, uh, building with the safety coordinator and CEO. And questions?
Questions? Yes.
Uh, I know from previous meeting, we talked about this, this brief theory you'd mentioned about the bylaws, sort of looking into some of the residents or the industrial. The heavier industrial use in the industrial area regarding, uh, wood jerk cans and stuff like that.
The relocatable.
Or maybe?
The relocating accommodations, yeah.
Yeah, and one of the concerns I just, like, you, you notice a lot more with the cold weather, there's a lot of activity down there now. And, um, just have the, does that have a hook into it?
So starting, once this bylaw is passed, assuming it does get passed, we'll be reaching out to all ones we know of that, you know, we find through our process of patrol. And then also by checking landfills that have an agreement with us. If the agreement is expired, we'll be asking to, um, to get a new one in place. If one doesn't exist, then looking to get a new agreement in place for that and obviously development permits and all that, so.
Do we, do we know, uh, like for the utilities, there's sewer, sewer and stuff like that, do we know what, about their?
That's all supposed to be included in the application, right? So we'll do an assessment of everything that I submit and then do an inspection to make sure it is as presented in the application. Anyone that's up that doesn't have a development permit or an agreement, we're not sure what's going on there.
Okay.
Are you talking about single bunkhouses in?
Oh, there's some sites down there that got over a dozen bunkhouses every day.
Yeah, they, the minimum is like, I mean, it's IT square meters.
So why would they have a development permit? They've never been, uh, allowed in the industrial division.
A temporary industrial accommodation is allowed in the industrial area, they just have to have an agreement with the town. So the new rule that we've put in the new land use bylaw is a five-year agreement. And it's only supposed to be for five months, I believe, throughout the year, I'd have to reiterate, but. So we have to, we're gonna have to work on the timing and then i- if it's temporary, how long is temporary, right? Is there a timeline defined by us in the end agreement that we've tackled it?
I guess I'm confused, I didn't think they were allowed in there at all in the old bylaw.
Yeah.
The temporary industrial. Yeah, well, temporary, but they're living there like all year long, right?
And that's what we need to get a handle on.
All right, thank you.
Madam Mayor, uh, Mr. Parsons for IT and IT.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
Just a very brief one from my side, um, IT systems were stable for the month of January, we had no major critical, um, disruptions. We have replaced several workstations and we will continue to replace them. However, we ran into a fairly strange compatibility issue between a critical financial system and the latest version of Windows 10. Um, to the point where if Director Phillips updates her Windows, she breaks the finances. Um. Upcoming is a hardware upgrade to the AXIA fiber coming into town hall. Um, this is a upgrade being driven by AXIA themselves, um, it's on their equipment. Um, unfortunately, it's something that needs to happen to keep pace. Um, so we are expecting a disruption in late April. At this point in time, AXIA is of the opinion that disruption will only be for around about 90 minutes. Um, but we are hoping to mitigate that and we will keep council and the rest of administration, the rest of, of that sort of thing. Try and shift all our Zoom meetings around when the internet will be down. Um, on the HI, HR side, we have no new vacancies. Um, we have four both the two vacant sports complex operated positions and we'd like to welcome, uh, Brittany Pelletier and, uh, Russell Schiltz of the team. Uh, we currently, at the time of waiting for the report, we have one protected position. Um, we covered by active staff, um, however, Dana Alford, you know, pleased to announce, has returned. And, uh, hopefully we will be filling up the last little vacancies very, very shortly.
Okay, thank you. Questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, I just had a couple of things I wanted to, uh, discuss tonight. Um, the first thing was the emergency landing at the airport at the end of the month. There occurred a similar amount of attention on social media as well as some out of region, uh, media attention. Um, because the event was, uh, I guess it was considered good news because nobody was hurt. Um, we used it as an opportunity to work with the airport manager to, uh, to get him some experience in speaking with media in that. That is deal with a more serious emergency or any other event in the future. Um, it was a, it was a good exercise in how that whole communications process can work at the airport. Through the town office, um, and for the record, he did an excellent job of that. Um, the other thing that we're doing is we're working on a series of videos to, uh, promote the election, um, including information on how to run. The, the videos were scripted and voiced by our communications assistant. And this has given our opportunity to put our media skills to use, because it's training.
Thank you.
Right, Councillor Ray, second report.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. Uh, this will be a quick one for me, I'll make up for it my next one. Uh, in January, we had four reported incidents. We had, uh, one damage, one injury. Uh, the injury, injuries basically were four only, no WCD, no medical treatment. Uh, we had two close calls. Um, one big thing I'm pleased to see, um, really coming to completion is our training. Uh, we've had tremendous, tremendous efforts by all of our staff, uh, making sure that any gaps we've identified are being, being completed. Uh, as well as, as in lagging, being done, so we're doing a good job on that. Um, observational conveniences, pretty close to being done, just running down through to see what other municipalities are doing, make sure that we're still. Um, observational convenancies, pretty close to being done, just running down through to see what other municipalities are doing, make sure that we still, uh, that we're within that industry standard. So that should be hopefully done around by the end of February, it should be rolled over to the supervisors to have a look and make sure that, uh, what, what I'm putting forth is, is good for them, it works for them and then we can, uh, start, start implementing those. That's roughly it for this.
Question? No, thank you.
Thank you. See you again in a minute.
Okay.
Judge Sterling, is the operation shut up?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council, um, operations, as you probably know, has been really busy and snowing up pretty well all the time. Oh, y'all know this in my report, I did say we, some days we average two hundred and twenty-five loads a day. Our snow dump, we're in our third tier, so what that means is we fill the yard full, we level it off, freeze it, so we're on our third double this year. Uh, we've had pretty well the same ones we had last year and we still have a couple of months to build. Um, we did have some minor damage downtown, somebody ran into a garbage man and killed it, uh, we are going to be replacing it. Our snowboard picked up a big metal object that's important, but, you know, probably be mindful of what lays on the street that damaged the, uh, flotation of the drive of our chute, which can blow it up or out, it, it broke it right off. So we had to weld it up to get it done today, so stuff on the street, debris and garbage is, uh, very dangerous for us, but we were very lucky. Uh, the airport, uh, we did our, uh, beginning of the month, we did our, uh, annual safety management review and it paid off later. As part of that, there was some corrective actions we looked at, stuff like filling up our dugout to mitigate some wildlife stuff. It was a weird one, uh, transport payment requires our operators out there, we use fire emergency for wildlife management, if there's an issue, we now have to have the business licenses in the municipality, we don't know that, so it's something I'm looking into. Uh, utilities, uh, pretty, pretty quiet, minor work within the plans as within the report. Uh, we did have a strange one, made a water service blow off underneath the trailer within that year, underneath the trailer park. It was of course Sunday morning at three o'clock, which is always the interesting part. Uh, we worked with the park owners, uh, one of the issues we had there is we don't know where the shut-off bells are within the park, different sections. Uh, this one was running full stream underneath the trailer and we're unable to shut it in right away, that left us with only one option, that was to shut down the whole trailer park. So they reached out, we reached out to them and we're gonna work with them this summer to see if we can identify some of their key structures so we can all be as reduced of the issue if it happens again. And, uh, that's about it.
Who maintains that infrastructure within Deerland?
So that's a, my condominium project and they have different contractors that come in, things snow and new water repairs, but it is a homeowners association, I guess. We may best find, we, we can look after it themselves. There's a variety of contractors, whether it's a little, little water conservators.
Any questions, Council? Thank you.
Uh, good evening, uh, Madam Mayor and Council, um, so January, uh, report for protective services starting off with, uh, community peace officers. A little quieter month, uh, for our peace officer program. In January, uh, we had a little bit of reduced capacity with, uh, one member still off, um, and, uh, our other peace officer took some vacation time in January. It was kind of one of our quieter months, so we had twenty-one calls for service, uh, eight completed investigations, one arrest. Our peace officers conducted, uh, investigation into the Public Health Act and assisted our public health inspectors with conducting investigations into the, uh, uh, public health orders, including one investigation that resulted in a charge being laid and a warrant for arrest being issued by a peace officer, by the Peace Officer of the Public Health Act. Um, enforcement services, uh, went into infrastructure and completed, uh, training for transition to e-ticketing. So we have the e-ticketing, uh, equipment that was, uh, put in the twenty twenty-one budget already installed. Um, and, uh, that process is, uh, now in place, um, and we're just kind of tying up all the last pile of loose ends for that, but it included all the e-ticketing, uh, now within, uh, the program. Emergency management, no activations, as councils aware, uh, through the city program, we're still, uh, well underway with the regional emergency plan with, uh, Denitah First Nations. Um, and part of that is including ICS one hundred training, there's several, uh, people from both organizations, uh, taking that online training and we have ICS two hundred, of course, uh, planned in a couple of weeks here in February. And the phase four, um, uh, grant application for phase four of that project is complete. Um, fire department also a little bit of a slower, uh, month, it started out really busy, we had twenty-seven calls in January and twenty of those calls were in the first two weeks. Um, we had a double fatal, uh, structure fire in Powell Prairie, uh, the aircraft emergency we've already talked about out at the airport, uh, that was responded to very well by our crews. Um, in conjunction with the other, uh, town departments and emergency services, we ate one of vehicle collisions in January and two fire calls for furnace faults that ended up in smoking homes. So, uh, just that kind of, uh, time of year with, uh, cold, cold weather upon us. Um, our, uh, fire department has been, uh, doing, uh, virtual training since mid-December, uh, so all of our training sessions have been done by Zoom, that is coming to a conclusion next week. Uh, or this week, sorry, we're going back to, uh, we've reinstituted some new protocols and we're going back to practical training, uh, starting on Wednesday. Um, we did have a positive contact in January from outside, uh, the workplace into the fire hall, uh, resulting, uh, from, uh, another workplace in town. And that resulted in three people, uh, two of which were our town staff and isolated for a couple of weeks, but there was no further positive cases that came out of that. Um, we had a planned place for a positive contact in the fire hall, that plan was implemented and everything was, was mitigated quite quickly. So the hall was locked down for a week, uh, for call attendance only, no other entrance. Um, the hall was fully sanitized and clean and, uh, and, uh, we extended our Zoom training for a couple of extra weeks. So, uh, that, I, it's, uh, good work by our, our fire crews to kind of get that all, uh, sorted out. Um, final thing I just wanted to bring up, uh, in, in this report was, I'm currently working as the Vice President of the Fire Chief Association, uh, to underscore the need for equal access to, uh, vaccines for COVID nineteen, uh, to our first responders. Currently under the Alberta Health, uh, vaccine guidelines, they've extended, uh, first responder access for vaccines to only EMS. So you have to be a paramedic working on ambulance to get access to vaccine, uh, fire services who respond to the exact same calls as EMS on a daily basis are, uh, not considered at all right now in the vaccine rollout and right now will be lumped in with the general public. Uh, this is creating a definite gap and a risk as we see to our volunteer firefighters as we saw with this positive contact within our fire department. If that would have snowballed when we did the count back, it would have resulted in a third of our fire department off for over two weeks, um, which would severely impact, uh, emergency service provision. Uh, many fire departments have, uh, been asking their councils to write a letter of support to the Minister of Health, Ministry of National Affairs to, uh, try and prioritize, uh, fire services who provide medical first response, um, in the vaccine rollout. So if council wants to consider that, we can either, um, bring up a report to you, it can be the whole next week, or if council is comfortable just to do ahead with a recommendation or a resolution, we would appreciate that. And we're in Fire Chief Association, we're in letters to ministers, to, um, the vaccine task force and it's fallen in depth here, so we decided to take it forward for our councils. And that's my report.
Thank you. Yeah, someone moved the monthly reports, please. Counselor Jessman, all in favor? Carry it. The, uh, community peace officer annual report.
Uh, Madam Mayor, Sergeant Rush will present our report to council.
Good evening.
Good evening, uh, Council. Well, as, uh, CEO Castle mentioned, I'm here to present to you our, uh, twenty twenty annual report. Uh, I'm not gonna go through it line by line, it's a nineteen-page document, we don't have that much time. Uh, as everyone was well aware, twenty twenty was a very strange year, uh, suited for us. Uh, right at the beginning of our, what would typically be our busy season, we encountered the pandemic. Some of the major challenges posed for us, uh, was provincial policies and changes around investigating, um, attacking arrests, laying charges as well as start general response. Uh, we were forced to adapt to multiple new, um, portion models and strategies to accommodate the COVID nineteen pandemic. Uh, in twenty twenty, we saw a year-over-year drop in revenue, uh, there's three primary reasons for our revenue drops. Uh, and it was in, um, Director Phelps's report a bit, but, um, over the last four years, we've had a bit of a priority change with how we conduct our portions of operations. So, um, previously a lot of our revenues collected are a result of thousands of traffic enforcement tickets being issued. Um, whereas our current, uh, mandate and priority is on public safety, community engagement and early interdiction, we're not issuing nearly as many of these revenue generating tickets. Um, the second issue, uh, with revenue, uh, was the COVID nineteen pandemic, uh, we received directions from the Crown Prosecution Service to, um, reduce the charges that we're laying, uh, particularly those of the provincial nature, uh, as well as to delay court appearances. So a lot of the charges that we did end up laying still have yet to receive file disposition. And then the last part with the revenue is just with the, uh, conditions and quarantines and public health order, COVID nineteen, there was just reduction in, uh, effects that would generate in this sort of revenue. Uh, the enforcement services have planned operating budget of three hundred and twenty-two thousand, four hundred and seventy-two dollars and we finished the year spending three hundred and eighty thousand, three hundred and forty-three, so thirty thousand, three hundred and sixty-nine under budget. Uh, for the entire year, we had five hundred and seventy-two calls for service placed to our dispatch service and we had completed six hundred and seven investigations in total. A hundred and ten of these were, uh, exclusively for traffic safety and five hundred and forty-seven were categories as general duty levels. In our six hundred and fifty-seven investigations, that included one hundred and ninety-five arrests that were completed by us independently and provided intelligence and support on fifty-three additional criminal matters to the RCP. Uh, we did a hundred and five public intoxication arrests, fifty-nine criminal code drug or hybrid offense arrests, nine traffic safety arrests and ten arrest warrants. Uh, between our criminal code arrests and criminal code assist files, we had a hundred and eleven federal statute files, uh, of those, sixty-seven were drug violence or weapons related. All of our investigations were completed without, um, our officers requiring us to have our weapons during use of course. Uh, year-over-year, um, this was a significant drop in our case reports as well as arrests, uh, typically do four thousand more files per year. Uh, there's a number of reasons for that as well. Um, the first is attributed to just the general demographic change that we've been reporting for the last couple of years, that trend. Uh, the second reason, our file production is of course the COVID nineteen pandemic. Then the third reason that we're reporting a drop in files is, uh, as a result of administrative changes we've made within the department and the administration. Uh, we streamlined a number of processes, um, with, uh, such as snowmobile parking enforcement, uh, sidewalk clearing, uh, matters as well as reassigning permitted property based files with, um, partnership development. Uh, these changes freed up hundreds of thousands of man-hours, uh, as well as reduced our, um, broken land use files as well. I'm not gonna go into specific detail on the files that I included in the, uh, report, but I'm happy to answer any questions, cuts and palls at the end. Uh, so in our annual report this year, we also included, uh, our enforcement strategy for the year that we send off to the, uh, Solicitor General's Office. Uh, we've got a couple of new projects that we're looking to build on for twenty twenty-one. Uh, one of the projects that we're looking to do, I have codenamed the LEAP calendar. Uh, it's modeled off what other communities have deployed under the term LEAP calendar, file enforcement and education program. Uh, but the one that we're building, uh, is going to partner with the Alberta Traffic Safety Calendar as well. So we renamed it as LEAP or Law Enforcement Witness Program. Uh, the intent is to, uh, target priority areas that we deal with in law enforcement, which changes every month. Um, we'll, with this program, we're gonna increase our messaging, remote compliance, uh, to these areas as well as we're gonna try to partner with, uh, other, uh, regional and provincial agencies such as the, uh, Integrated Traffic Unit. Uh, these topics are gonna include anything from, uh, winter driving habits in the winter to animal and under safety in the fall. Uh, in the program we're looking to build on is the School Resource Officer Program. Uh, we had looked to partnering with the school division, I guess, almost two years ago now. Um, but as of this year, with some of the time we've been able to free up, uh, we wanna dedicate, um, a little bit of time to working with that agreement that we put in place with the school division and build a part-time, as available program, we'll work with the schools, uh, as it fits into our community policing and early, uh, early intervention models of community policing that we're looking to do. And just to sum up, uh, the report itself, um, uh, there was a matter that came up with the issue that we're looking to with, uh, twenty twenty-one, uh, with our radio communication systems. Um, we are looking to go to, or get council support, uh, as the RCP K-division moves into the next phase of their, uh, radio communication program. Um, as we know, a year ago, they changed their communication access to outside agencies, um, removing everybody off of their, um, radio communications. Um, once they officially did that, uh, a lot of communities in the province reached back out to the RCP to revert back to the way we've done for the last thirty years. Um, so they initiated a pilot program to see how we can make radio communications work. Uh, phase one of that program was deemed a success and they've moved now into what they're calling phase two, which is doing the program of phase one all over again with the same communities that they did it the first time. Um, so what we are hoping to do is get council support, um, to reach out to K-division and hopefully get a high level included in this phase two portion of it, which is, um, my understanding is beginning as early as now, uh, for the phase two portion of it. Um, they've included two southern communities and, um, the Grand Prairie area in this pilot program, there's no northern or remote, uh, locations included. We feel this is an opportunity for us to include this program as well. Uh, we could bring forward a formal RFD to do the whole, uh, other one, I sort of, we need council support on that. That's what we would like to do.
So, um, Mark, uh, where did you hear about this rolling out as a phase two of this pilot project?
I believe that it's confidential.
Oh. Okay.
I, I don't know if I'm supposed to know about it or not.
Okay.
Um, but that is my understanding, it's a phase two that's underway, or they're getting phase two underway.
Okay.
RCP is in the process of signing the emergency arrangements.
Okay. I was gonna reach out to K-division today and, and, and find all those answers though, but, uh, the person I was going to reach out to isn't there anymore. So I guess council will have to write a formal letter, maybe to Curtis, uh, maybe I could get a phone call with him, I don't know.
I don't know what the process is to, to move that forward or if there's even any reality there. Um, the, the rumors I'm hearing is that they're hoping to move, uh, like, complete the project and be up and running within the next couple of months anyway.
So why would they do a phase two program with the same program they just did?
I'm not entirely sure, my understanding is that, uh, phase one, um, was the initial pilot project and all they did was they gave these communities, um, their own RCP radios. And, um, phase two is they're actually going to encrypt the municipality radios with their channel. I don't understand why we need to do it again, but that's not the decision we.
Okay, we will, we will check that. Hopefully get some answers. Yes.
We met with K-division at the last anniversary, we, we definitely, and we have raised this issue, we, yeah. He, he was sympathetic, said that that intake are closed, but the team was strongly consider us as a whole community and future, um, testing, if they did. And we're, we can reach out and maybe align it with them.
We, we used the leverage.
Uh, the council would like that, that motion was, like, officer, the question that was, um, only that.
I conclude our report. Otherwise, if there's any other questions.
Any other questions from council? Thank you.
Thank you.
Report.
Thank you.
Um, can we read the vote?
Um, for the council, accept Sergeant Nurse, uh, the deputy police officer twenty twenty-eight report. And reach out to, uh, Grade eleven to K-division to ask them how the whole K-division, Phase Two, operations process.
So do you think I should reach out to Council, to Curtis, or should I find out what's going on? Okay, so you want to put that as part of your motion? Or just want me to do that? I'll just do it. All in favor, Madam Mayor? Carry. All in, uh, definitely here, like, right?
Sorry. Um.
What?
That's what you were talking about.
Okay. Okay, so the next, uh, next piece of the agenda is the health and safety compliance.
Not a mayor's complaint, uh, for, uh, the council.
Good evening again. So this is basically, it's a snapshot, kind of goes along with the interim audit, uh, that we do every year. Interim audit is based on, do you do this? Yes. Uh, this is more along the lines of this is exactly what's going to happen. Um, so it's been a snapshot in time. Uh, so overall, last year between January first and September first, uh, we had eighty-one recorded incidents. Um, as you can see, these is by departments, pretty much every department facility, um, and some other kinds. Just looking at those numbers, eighty-one, um, that might seem like it's a lot, maybe a little concerning. Uh, if you break it down into leading indicators, it's significantly better. It's actually more or less a direction on what's going to happen. Uh, your leading indicators, your near misses and your hazards, ten to thirty-seven overall reports. That's telling you something is going to happen down, down the road. Um, employees are getting really good at identifying and reporting these. Um, that keeps us from having accidents, accidents, uh, first aid, et cetera. Uh, lagging indicators, twenty-five. So all our reports, twenty-five, uh, there's some reported first aid or, uh, damage above five. Ideally, you want to see your leading indicators way above your lagging. If it's the other way around, some of it not working. Right? If your employees aren't telling you the system is broken, you're never going to fix it. So go, go, go. So we are moving in the right direction. Um, the root cause analysis, the cause analysis of our incidents, uh, forty-four percent inadequate compliance standards, forty-four percent standard. Um, so again, our supervisors, uh, directors, managers are getting really good at digging down into the reasons. Figuring out where we're going wrong, what we need to do to fix that. Couple of years before, you would never see these numbers because I was just being, oh. Didn't quite figure it out. Now we're getting down to getting rid of it. We're, we're getting, we're getting your answer. I mean, we're putting in the right corrective actions for that. Uh, moving on down, I guess the immediate cause analysis, things where not really the error. And your basic cause analysis, the biggest one inadequate risk assessment. Kind of goes in line with inadequate motivation. Sometimes some people just take a little bit too quick, just want to get the job done early in the day, late in the day, thinking of something else. So we're kind of working on that. Overall, it's a really good job getting down to figure why these are happening and what we can fix them. Of all our incidents, uh, ninety-eight percent in the seminar were completed. That means they were completely reviewed. Um, hazards mitigated, all the hazards that were reported in twenty twenty-four completed. Are certainly closed, so what, what comes in, they're reviewed, uh, the safety community reviews them, supervisors review them, corrective actions on them. And, uh, we implement those corrective actions. Task compliance, so that's, uh, word for our corrective action plan. Um, that's on the way. Right now, we're at eighty-six, or sorry, at the time of this, we're at eighty-six percent completed. Um, twenty percent are still open, uh, one percent overdue, one percent on hold. Those on hold are things that we're not going to really characterize. We can't do anything in the winter. It's going to have to be some kind of thing. So we, we put those on board. Uh, inspection compliance, phenomenal. All facilities match. There's, so all facilities next, they're required inspection, um, monthly. And, uh, and quarterly, uh, so really good job there. Uh, injury aspect, so roughly seventy-five percent of the injuries are no more than a band-aid. More of more or less, uh, nineteen percent require some sort of medical attention and six percent require medical treatment. Quarterly meeting attendance, um, ninety-two percent. It's a great number, especially considering we had this year through all these meetings. People would call in with personal phones or pushing computers, uh, for our organization meetings. That has, that's good. Our community meeting, eighty-four percent, um, those are average attendance for all the meetings we meet monthly. And again, I'm going to go back to the organization-wide training. At the end of December, we had eighty-nine percent. Today, I have a superior of ninety-two percent. Um, that three percent might not see what they want, but the entire organization doesn't want to work. Um, uh, at the end of November, with, with the, uh, internal events audit, we're at eighty-four percent. Um, so we're, we're making very strong memories. Um, overall, I've made it, it was a good, it was a good year. Um, there's still theories and things out, but, uh, we're just trying.
Thank you. Yep. Wow. In your part.
Sure.
I like the picture.
I'll be doing that next time.
Thank you. Someone move the health and safety or. That's ten point seven. All in favor? Carry. Ten point seven is the arena shutdown.
And there are urgent rules, uh, for our facilities, uh, our facilities. Changes in certain policies.
So good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. I apologize for lack of written reports.
You sound revitalized.
Yeah, I actually have a face now. So, and I have no allergic masks, so we don't have to keep this down. Anyway, so lots of, uh, changes, um, seem to change daily, just in our facilities. Towards the end of January, the paper had announced, um, the task forward, four different steps. I don't know how many possibleizations. Um, was it three intervals in between the steps? Originally, the first step didn't include, um, much of the, uh, lack of restrictions on sports. Um, Alberta Hockey Association, the new time finally said February first, they're having a drop dead decision. Because all of these communities are, we've got lots of positive communities. Um, they're trying to decide who we use, our venues are planned, so we're going to have this fine, we can see law and security policy. Um, so February first, February second, Alberta Hockey Association said, Association said, that's it. That's the end of the season, end of twenty twenty season. And then February seventh, um, it, yeah, it's announced that, uh, they loosened up some of the restrictions for sports. And, um, uh, youth sports will be allowed a dead gift sub-ten, including their coaches on ice. So minor hockey here has been working with, um, all the registrants to see if there's still an appetite, um, to continue on hockey. We're giving them till February tenth. So far, they've had more half, which is enough to get to the board of, um, uh, kids still want to play, play hockey. They'll just be practice, there won't be games at this point. Um, they asked if, um, the town, uh, lengthen the season. Um, I said that we would, but then they changed it all, so, which is revenue from the town as well. So right now, we're looking at, uh, so, uh, Tuesday to Saturday, um, the shortened hours, we keep our staff down. And, uh, and I realize it's still making quite as much of, um, like, hour after hour of hockey as opposed to apps in service. And, um, well, we'll absolutely for sure remind our hockey fans, well, figure skating, um, they're on board too. Um, so it looks like, um, that's going to be coming back. We have said that if we're, if the restrictions use again for adult sports, then we'll be able to, um, lengthening, yeah, seasons similar to what it was before, it's a seven days additional. I also have a cool update too, there's one question over there.
You put that to me.
No, it's happening.
When I saw the arena plant shut down, I thought, oh my God, the plant now.
Well, it was coming down. I was going to say that we're going to suggest to shut down if there's not going to be any sports, like, how long? That plenty, um, although in all fairness, with the cooler weather and our plants ready, we'd be two, three hours, twenty-five, period until it's, if it was thirty degrees outside and we were struggling, we'd have to find a way to get it to store.
So are we opening the screen floor too?
Well, what we're looking at is we're allowing one-to-one instruction for, um, households of, uh, for the same household. So we're looking at appointment weekly, um, bookings, so for an hour of full time, um, for lessons, so the, uh, family or a person will have an option, okay, just like the hour or an hour with the lesson. And, uh, we're also opening up some school times, because they're leading me right now. So what we'll do is we'll block hours to, um, to have a available for them afterwards, because they do need to use the pool. And that was the other thing in the section, that these, uh, this is a school that needs infrastructure outside, uh, from the school, uh, for gym, like a pool or arena, they can continue, so they're able to use the evening. We've been looking at Wednesday to Sunday, starting the seventeenth. Um, and we're also working on our online system, so we can, on the online, we can go and practice. Um, and then at the half rates, instead of ninety dollars an hour, you get, you know, it's an hour, additional twenty-five lessons. And so you could be a senior, you could book a lesson and, um, an hour and a quarter. And, um, practice, and you could have lessons yet, yes, with, uh, um, two, three, four. Because there are hour and a half now, you need to.
That's good. Good for the kid.
Well, we figured it was important, um, for mental health and, and discipline for people to be, just have something to do.
I'll be putting the link on your private.
No. Thank you. Did you have something else you wanted to tell us?
No, should I, did you have?
Oh, no, I thought you said I have something else to tell you. No.
There's the Alan's talk.
That's scary, I know. Looks at me all the time. Councilor Morgan moves for information. All in favor? Carry. Uh, down to the RFD for amendment to the land use.
Madam Mayor, um, administration would, uh, like to apologize. We should have noted that before final comments, the afternoon was supposed to be given, uh, an opportunity to provide final comments. Uh, we should have noted that for council. Um, so GSA is still a vacation, so we can feel about their final comments.
Okay, final comment. From GSA.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor and, and Council. Um, I, I just want to focus on, um, three comments that are actually hikari comments that we heard from the public and they also came out, uh, during the engagement and activists that we, um, sponsored. Um, the first one is traffic and, and I, I would just say this, I want to say this very, uh, careful and, uh, and in, in a, in a positive way, like GSA and, uh, and our team, we, we do a lot of work with municipalities and, uh, and also private sector, uh, clients, more, more so with, with municipalities. And, and when we see comments like traffic, uh, property values and safety, we, we took this very serious, seriously, but also carefully, because those are things that in, in, in urban environments, they need to be a little bit more investigated sometimes because they could be perceptions or they could be just temporary, but in, in either way, uh, there needs to be some kind of a validation before we can actually take them as fact. So I just would like to say that because we, uh, we, we, we saw the letter from our C and P. We saw a lot of people saying, oh, that could be increasing in, in traffic in the, on the lane. There could be, uh, on-street parking issues, there could be, uh, safety issues with increase of, of crime. But those are, uh, valid concerns, but as valid concerns, uh, they, they should be not just taken as fact, but they should be carefully analyzed. Um, the other thing that I will also like to mention is that there's a lot of problems that are related to, um, operations of a, uh, 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 high-density development site like this. Um, i- and that should not be connected to the rezoning, uh, process. Like the rezoning is really about the land use and the build form. Uh, I think, um, if the site is well-maintained or if there is any other problems with, uh, garbage collections and those things are really related to the operation of the development, not, uh, a land use, uh, related problem. Um, I think, uh, Yonish also has some, um, things that you'd like to say. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, uh, and, uh, respected members of the council. I would just like to stress, uh, one more fact. I think Marcelo mentioned, uh, uh, his reasoning, but, um, zoning, uh, in a way is, uh, to control, uh, the final use and not, uh, the final user. So, uh, again, some of the concerns we heard, uh, during, uh, public engagement, uh, if there are any concerns with the, with the final user associated, uh, with the site, uh, those issues can be addressed, uh, through enforcement and other measures, uh, that the town may have. So, uh, we would like you to consider that fact, uh, before, uh, as you make, uh, your decision on this application. So thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I'm Scott, who presents in church comments.
Good evening, thanks again. Um, this is for the amendment to the land use by law, nine four four dash thirteen. The rezoning application from R one to R two. Uh, as Marcelo covered in GSA's presentation, there was a number of, um, public engagement activities that were undertaken in January of twenty twenty-one. Online, in person, I did meet with the few members of the public myself here at the town office and walked through the boards on the project and, uh, discussed the concerns that were raised. Uh, the CIO and myself have reviewed and reevaluated this application a number of times since it first, uh, came across our desk and then also received first reading. As noted during the public hearing, we did receive approximately twenty letters, um, and emails from adjacent landowners, um, all of which were opposed to the rezoning of these sites. Uh, it's worth noting, I just highlighted in my RFD, that, um, a couple of the adjacent landowners created letter templates that were centered around, I mean, people agreed with statements and comments around it, assigned themselves and handed in. That's why there's a lot of duplication in the letters. Um, most of the concerns, uh, were regarding building height, uh, building density, privacy in sight lines, traffic volume on a hundred and third street and the rear alleyways. Uh, parking on the alleyways, uh, on-street parking along a hundred and third increased noise, uh, due to higher concentration of families on the site. And then the potential for decrease in neighboring property value. and then the potential for decrease in neighboring property values. From a planning perspective, we have a lot of the same concerns. Those weren't all just from the public, they were from myself and the CIO as well. For the R one and R two land use districts, applicants are able to build up to ten meters in height. So that includes two-story buildings. So even today, an application committing R one for a two-story home, and that is permitted developments, so just wanted to highlight that. I think the bigger issue around building height is the orientation of the buildings. So in some of the concepts, you will have seen townhouses backing onto the neighboring properties on a hundred and third street because of the orientation on the site, which was causing height, privacy and sight line concerns. During the initial round of stakeholder engagements, so in summer last year, July twenty twenty, GSA were up here for an open house and some stakeholder insurance sessions. They did meet with town administration and all of the senior management team and if you were staffed, did look over the concepts. And at that time, it was for R three as well, so it's higher density. The fire department and operations department didn't really see that much that it would severely impact their operations throughout the year, having a higher density development there. So it's just something I wanted to bring to your attention because it was highlighted in public feedback and stakeholder feedback. For the potential of increased noise due to a higher concentration of families could be addressed by incrementally increasing density. So for example, we have five houses on five sites right now. Social housing plans to consolidate by the new to one, which then would increase the ability for a higher density. But if we limited it, say a double, going from five houses to ten or maybe twelve townhouses, two boxes of six, that type of thing, rather than quadrupling it to what it has been discussed in some of the concepts, you go from five to twenty. As administration, we believe that the rezoning application does have merit. We received the current writing list from Royal Housing late on Friday afternoon. And just to give highlights of that, there's three applications in for one-bedroom place. There's ten applications for two-bedroom, three applications for three-bedroom, one application for four and one application for six-bedroom place. So that's current for a total of eighteen. That was the last Friday. So we do believe that rezoning application does have merit. There are obviously other places in town where this type of development could go, that is true. But the current application is for that site. So we believe that to move this application forwards as presented for R two, through existing planning tools, there's really only one of two options. It's either starting again with the rezoning and going with direct control. We have talked to GSA and social housing about that during the length of this project, during R three and R two, and it's not something that they want to do. So the second option is looking at doing an agreement, whether it's a restrictive covenant or a development agreement for the site. And within that agreement, we would be looking at putting in limitations for height, density, dwelling type, orientation of dwelling, so that it satisfies or mitigates the concerns that we have from planning perspective, all the issues that we've heard from stakeholders and the public and perhaps yourselves as well. So that's really where we're sitting at right now. I have provided a couple of tables in the RFD with land use by law nine four four dash thirteen and then ten eighteen dash twenty one for R two land use district. There's not much difference between the permitted and discretionary uses. One thing I would like to highlight as well, in some of the presentations, we've seen the municipal development plan referenced. Administration wants to accept responsibility for having multiple versions of the MDP on our website. So there was a line in there specifically about the town promoting residential density with a minimum of fourteen units per hectare in the residential board, which we include this site. But that was in the two thousand and ten municipal development plan, which was removed in the revised version in twenty eighteen. So I just wanted to make that note for council. We have gone back to the website, removed multiple versions. So our recommendation for council today is to provide second reading to by law ten seventeen dash twenty and defer third reading to a future meeting in twenty twenty one with the purpose of administration working with Green Size Alliance and the social housing on the development of a restricted covenant or development agreement inside. Take any questions?
I just need clarification on your comment there regarding operations required. Did you say that they did not have a concern for traffic?
Yes, so from a planning perspective, the initial designs had driveways going into the front of the development where the orientation was not facing a hundred and third. And for our perspective and planning, the proximity to the junction, it was too close. And then we had discussions with operations and the fire protective services as well that didn't throw up any severe concerns.
Thank you.
What about the access from a hundred and third?
The access on like the, so it would be rear access on the rear alley by the R C O P detachment. And then from a hundred and second avenue, there would be an access there down the alley as well to the back of the site and then parking would be onsite at the rear of the properties. But all of those would be, so that would be considerations at the development permit stage. The restrictive covenant or the development agreement would be specifically to mitigate all of our concerns and all of the concerns that were raised from the public. Municipalities do use those tools to try and protect property values on adjacent properties. It's one tool that can be used. We certainly haven't had much discussion at all with GSA really. We had a quick chat today. It's something that social housing and GSA are willing to look into. Our thought is if we defer third reading to a future meeting, that we would come back with draft agreement to review prior to doing our request for third reading.
I guess I still have major concerns about parking along there. We, I mean, we have all been pretty timbered access parking and how that doesn't work. People still continue to park on the front side of the building, so. I'm still not, yes.
So with a restrictive covenant, they would have to agree to all the terms. We can't literally impose that on them. And if we were to approve the zoning, as long as they were in compliance with the land use by law, they could basically pick the development that they want. My big concerns here have always been, what are they doing with those families that currently live there? They're saying that there's a shortage because they're going to displace those for a significant period of time. And you know, just the concerns that we've heard from the rest of the community and the potential density that we're going to have there.
Yeah, in terms of the restrictive covenant, we have a few in town already. So one example, the architectural controls on Boston Avenue and Bear Creek Drive and Champway Drive. So the development permit application must conform to land use by law. And then above and beyond that, they must meet the architectural controls that have been imposed on those sites by the previous or the current owner, I guess. So as they're sold, we have a couple of development permits coming in this year for Champway Drive, where they've had to meet those architectural controls. Another couple I can think of are non-compete causes in the commercial area. So we have a couple in the Bison Development in number one on Highway thirty five. So they are above and beyond the land use by law in the restrictive covenant, they're registered on the title. So you would know more than our, that's my understanding of what we can afford.
Okay, but a restrictive covenant is something that the town is the original owner or the developer of the entire region area is going to put on there. It's not something that's added after you have an individual landlord. In my mind, a lot of concerns could maybe be addressed if they can simply come back and say, this is the design that we'd like to use, rather than having six, eight, ten options, whatever we got the first time, which included what a forty-eight unit apartment building. I fail to understand why they just can't come and say, this is our preferred option. And then we won't have a public hearing, see what kind of debate there is and council can make a decision. It just seems that they're looking to circumvent our process and just get us to do the rezoning and then they can fit in a bunch of different designs.
We have had this conversation with them a number of times. And they're not wrong in what they say about coming to us for the rezoning application and then working on development specifics in the development permit application process. They're not wrong in that. However, I do understand that with this type of application, that it is very controversial. You know, having a clear idea of what the proposed development would be would obviously be favorable to this application. We just haven't been able to arrive at that stage.
I'd tend to agree that, like, we don't know what we're going to get. Like in my mind, if we're going to do anything, we go to direct control. Like restrictive covenants on what, on what development?
The target party density orientation. Trying to address the concerns that we have in that.
So what the deputy mayor is saying, come to us with a plan. Don't give us six different, seven different plans and. Yes, you.
No, I just wanted to reiterate that this administration's concern is that if council were to proceed with just rezoning, we would have to admit anything that fell within the permitted uses on that site and some of which would not address the issues that were brought forward. Development agreement would do that. Development agreement could also narrow it down to what the actual proposal is to where council would decide on that.
And the deputy mayor has a legitimate argument to where are those five families going to go in the meantime?
I don't think GSA was hired to address that. That would have to come from social housing, but I think that's about the question to look forward to social housing, especially when we have eighteen families looking for you right now.
Any other? No, I was looking at, I was like, well.
So it's a teacher. Difference between direct control and if we went with a development agreement. So if we went with a development agreement, would we be able to control the number of family dwellings?
Yes.
Would we be able to control the height concerns?
Yes.
Okay, so what's the concern with that? If we can control those, like if we feel that they put out, we can knock off some of their suggestions, like they have what forty, they have some pretty high numbers there originally. We can knock those off and put in what our suggestions or recommendations are and they have all of that inside, right?
Yeah. But if it all parties agree, I mean, assign to that, which is what we need to achieve. So if they wanted to come back to another meeting in a month's time, we would have this time to work out a draft agreement with them.
And what's the build, what plan?
Well, instead of narrowing it down to exactly what would go there, giving them, say, maximums, right? So maximum height, maximum dwellings. So as long as if you said maximum dwelling number was twelve, then we would never see more than twelve townhouses or whatever, right? So that type of thing, that was where we were getting with this. And it was a very preliminary conversation we had with them today that we would expect that we could achieve that if it was maximum X X X across the board and to be something that council administration could work with. Hopefully, social housing, would you say?
Their application isn't going to direct control, it's going to R two, right? Just given all the concerns, my thoughts are that we would put this off to a future meeting without making any further reading, not tabling it for information, but tabling the entire process to a future meeting to allow administration to go back and address some of these concerns and see if they do have a future plan. I just. I just don't want to go down the road personally of passing second reading and going back to do this. I think that at this stage, we could, again, ask them to address our concerns, the residents' concerns, administration's concerns.
But haven't they addressed their concerns? Like, we've heard from fire department and our operations, they don't have concerns of traffic. We can address the height issues and the number issues. What are their other concerns that we need to listen?
Your C and P has addressed some traffic concern.
Have you read the letter? There's a lot of concerns in there. Yes.
Just to clarify, our department has no concerns with regards to congestion in the alleyways or the street parking, because we can manage that as we do manage the street. What we haven't been able to assess because we don't have a site plan is the access to firefighting. Like so, depending on the layout, we can't work on the conceptual drawings of like what GSA has laid out to understand if there's firefighting access concerns or such. Restructuring road lines from the streets and that kind of stuff. That was addressed by GSA during their open house here, but we don't have concerns with the traffic. So I wanted to clarify. So we can't assess, we can't assess it without a real.
Any other questions? Yes.
So even if GSA brought forth a, like a highly specific site plan, if we go and pass readings for rezoning, like how bound are they to their, to that highly specific plan that, that may, that the public may, that everybody maybe agrees on, but how bound are they? Like where's the protection? It's still a zoning and if they then make changes that are in compliance with the zoning, there's no controls over that. Although, you know, we could add those developmental restrictions in there, I guess, but.
Well, it depends. If we, if we don't have an agreement, say, for example, they provide another concept and the zoning is passed without an agreement between a restricted covenant development agreement, then yes, any of the permitted uses they can put in a development application for and do it or discretionary, it might up to the development authority to approve or not. But what we're suggesting is to create an agreement to address most of these concerns and then come back for third reading. And when, if that agreement is agreed upon and signed, then they're held to the maximums in the agreement. They can't pull above on that site.
So I guess my question is, what's the difference between a direct control and a restrictive covenant?
Well, council is the development authority under a control. It's working specifically with council unless you delegate the authority to administration to work on a design concept and development permit for the site. With providing the maximums, they could be within a range, right? They don't have to maximize, they could be below. So it doesn't restrict them to doing this and only this. It's within this is where we found that, you know, compromise could be found. As we found, the application did have merit to address some of the applications for social housing.
Yes.
I mean, if, if we choose to allow an administrator who they're working and they're, they're going to advise us, we still have the ability not to approve or fork.
No, once we rezonate, it calls the use.
But we still, we still have the ability not to allow it to be zoned.
Mm-hmm. Yes. Yes.
There's still one more.
Reading.
Yeah. So if we allow an administrator to develop something and present something other than us having direct order, we still have that ability to push calls or to not approve it?
Yes, we do. Yes.
Because my thoughts are if we were to table this so that some of this work can go, and if it came back and they do have a proposed design, and we move second reading, we could also move a further public hearing, an open house, to go out to the residents to have it reviewed. Whereas if we do second reading today, maybe they come back, we don't necessarily have that opportunity.
To the beginning of the term.
Yep.
So I would give the motion. Um, so. Wants to move on if there are any more questions?
I'll move to table this to the second meeting in May to allow administration to...
Did you see the second meeting?
Second meeting in May, which would allow three months for them to have discussions and, again, I think stress to pick a design if they would like to be considered so that we can involve them, put that to the public and see what the response is.
Is three months necessary for that type of work to be done?
Just like with the mask by law, it can be brought back.
Probably give it a break, grab tomorrow.
If you have a question?
I was under the same impression that it would be three months.
They have three months to pick a design, reach an agreement with administration. We take it back to the public, see if they like that?
I just think it was, that was a bulky amount of time between your last application and this one, you're telling me.
Rand, you have something to say?
No, I agree that three months is probably adequate. And I don't think that we should shorten the process to give you time to think about what they want to do. It also gives administration time to look at their proposal and see whether it's open to meet what our public wants or will these meet their standards or criteria? If we get it too short, I think then it gives too much pressure and conflict up.
Any further questions, comments? Those in favor of the deputy mayor's motion? Those opposed? None? Thank you. All right, throwing the North Conference. February fifteen, sixteen, seventeen. If we have a motion for those councillors that wish to attend to get back to Ms. Beaton?
Oh, yeah.
All in favor? Carrie, and maybe get back to her, like, you know, soon? Terry, he just said... Terry says not going.
I don't mess around.
It's too quick, you'll just... Like, I corded it, like, because it's just, like, a week is...
A little wide.
All right.
Just make sure you get right.
Thirteen point three, first reading of proposed bylaw. One zero one nine two one.
Just saying, this one's short, or a problem. So to coincide with the update of the land use bylaw, this is the building permit standards bylaw. The current version we have is from nineteen ninety-eight. It was implemented during the time when the town employed a safety officer. So we're basically just overhaul in this bylaw to reflect current practices. And then also the appendices of the ninety-eight bylaw have nineteen ninety-seven musical engineering standards in it. We got new ones in twenty fifteen. So we're just cleaning it up to work with the new musical engineering standards and the new land use bylaw. So we're asking for first reading and then to have a public hearing day on this time day as well, land use bylaw public hearing date.
Someone make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Counselor Jesselman, all in favor? Carrie. Correspondence for action, fourteen point one. Invitation from the Minister of Municipal... Word of excellence, maybe you should do ourselves. Danny?
Madam Mayor, that's actually administration's suggestion is that we put a submission under the partnership category before the person who has the even interest.
Somebody want to make that motion? Counselor Welke, all in favor? Carrie. Correspondence for information, anybody want to talk about any of that? If not, can I have a motion?
All in fifteen, all in fifteen, six.
Counselor Forrest, all in favor? Carrie. All right, that ends our public portion of the meeting. Council will now go into in-camera. Could I have a motion to go in-camera, please? Counselor Anderson, all in favor? Carrie.